Do I think?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to open this public work session for the Mawa Board of Education for October thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Would you please take role?
Ms. Sacco.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Mr. Kesmarski.
Here.
Ms. Conoco.
Here.
Dr. Morthe.
Here.
Mr. Windrickowitz.
Yes.
And Ms. Barron.
Here. Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on October thirtieth, twenty nineteen, in the administrative offices, sixty Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Could everyone please rise for a salute to the flag? Uh, Mr. Windrickowitz, would you like to lead us? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion to recess to, um, executive session? Mr. Kesmarski, second by Ms. Conoco. Thank you. We should be back in about fifteen minutes. May I have a motion to reconvene? Uh, Ms. Conoco, second by Mr. Windrickowitz. Agenda questions, please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. May I have a motion to open to the public? Mr. Gallo, second by Dr. Morthe. Questions from the public? Okay, thank you very much. May I have a motion to close to the public? Oh, uh, Mr. De Silva, second by Mr. Copeland. Um, Dr. Shown, do you have a report for us this evening?
I do, and it's a great report. I'm actually gonna turn over my time, um, to our favorite GW principal, Kevin Olmer, um, and Dominic Liata is our director of guidance, who are going to both present for us, as they do, the two thousand nineteen district testing results. I also do wanna thank the administrative staff that sits beside you and behind you, um, and in front of us. It is a direct result of the work that you do with our very dedicated teachers, that we are able to perform the way in which we do. So, thank you for being here. Um, these results are all of us, all the time, at every grade level. So, I think it's awesome that you're here to support your colleagues and our district. Thank you very much. Kevin, starting.
Good evening, great to see everyone. Dominic and I are happy to be back. Uh, for our annual presentation.
God will get you.
Again, a change with our test last year was the first year in New Jersey, switched from the PAR to the NJSLA. Um, so while we had a new assessment, with similar many ways, regardless of the platform how it was used, the way the test looked, there was a drastic change at some good times. So, um, in grade three, the test was reduced by an hour and fifty-five minutes. Grades four through eight, the test was reduced by two and a half hours, and in high school, it was reduced by three hours. Well, we're touring on all the testing grades. I've just been asked through by grade eleven, because we did have twenty, only twenty-five students in grade eleven that participated in the assessment. The reason being that the state changed, um, mandate for elementary tests. And it seems that were tested, we're still referring to use the assessment. As in past part, the NJVOE is not providing district backdoor comparison. One set is released typically by most districts, uh, most presentations the next few weeks. Are some special education groups that did different assessment, other than the NJSLA, they participate in dynamic learning labs? Which is really easy to evaluate. We did need a required participation rate of ninety-five percent, but ninety-seven percent of our students. So, similar years past, um, we have bar graphs here to compare, uh, the percentage of students who met or exceeded expectations in Mawa versus percentage of, or percentage of the state. So, we're looking at mathematics first, grades three, four, and five. You'll see, just as you're interpreting the graph, um, for grade three, eighty-four percent of our students met or exceeded expectations, while in the state, fifty-five percent of students met or exceeded expectations. Black number on the blue bar indicates our level of performance in the state. Grade next results, grades three, four, and five, very similar to what we've seen in the past, who participated in the part. Really, at every grade level, you're looking at, um, plus or minus three percent. That calls for, that grade three, four, and five. Math, we'll see here, um, grades six, seven, and eight, fifty-seven percent of students in grade six met or exceeded expectations. And that number is a little bit lower than you see in the elementary school. And we're really taking a close look at that and seeing why that transitioned, middle school not as difficult percent. And we know that the standards are very, very different in middle school, what we're asking kids to do in middle school. It's basically difficult, but we're gonna look for a significant transition because, um, although grade eight also looks low, there's a reason for that, and that's because we have a very large number of students that participate, um, in algebra. In fact, we had ninety-three students participate in the algebra assessment, grade eight. So, if we're looking at grade eight as a cohort of, um, grade eight students, we actually have seventy-five percent of the students that have.
So, but that cohort would have also been in the seventh, I mean, in the past, there would have been seventh graders.
Right, so there are thirteen seventh graders that participated now. All those students went to the assessment.
I think what I'm trying to say is, so, in this snapshot, we see sixty-two percent of our seventh graders meeting or exceeding, go down to forty-seven, but then on adjusted basis, we're at whatever the number was, seven, seventy-five. So, would we, our expectation, you know, lo- looking at this longitudinally, we're obviously looking for our seventh graders to perform as well, or better than our current eighth graders.
Yeah, I think it is imperative to be adding the kids that participated.
Yeah.
In algebra.
Right. But then the sixth, the sixth, the sixth grade number, going back to your remark about the transition from elementary to middle school. There's the issue.
We do see a transition as well. All districts, in terms of that transition to middle school.
Oh. Yeah, when we don't have DFG data, it's, yeah, can't really tell.
So, we'll certainly look into that. Um, I think we do recognize. Um, I know that we're really working on articulation between the schools. And there are always differences between the middle school and middle grade school. We'll talk about that transition, and we're also using the district, uh, the elementary school. Moving on to algebra, geometry, and Algebra II. This is proficiency level, which is an information for all of these courses. Algebra, geometry consists of two different courses, based on students, while it includes.
And the Algebra II is the terminal exam value we should point out. For graduation, right? So, this tells us that nearly three-quarters of our graduates are proficient in Algebra II, that's really an accomplishment.
But, uh, just a question, do we look at, um, when you look at these, do you also look at the piece of, is there some reason, for example, geometry is at fifty fi- I mean, that, you know, to m- to met or exceed means that there's forty-five percent of students who are missing something, right, in geometry? So, but is there any look, when you guys look at testing results, based on within that department? And is there, you know, any factors that contribute to that? You know, teachers, teaching.
But on a statewide basis, it was also lower.
No, I agree, so, but, but still, fifty-five for our district is, uh, there's a large percentage of kids missing something in geometry.
For district, that puts in almost seventy-five percent for Algebra II.
And I think Algebra II is actually harder.
Me too.
Geometry is easier for me, too.
So, I'm just curious, but do you look at other factors?
Right, I think, first, looking at the state proficiency level, you can see thirty-one percent. And you see our percentage of lower two is a significant net particular test.
Yeah.
Maybe a harder test for students. Uh, but we do look at that, and administrators and supervi- principals, supervisors get together, look at the data, and then communicate it, and look at, share their, their features and their abilities, and we're looking at problems from students who are not successful. In some ways, the same logic that applies to our eighth grade class, because we're taking non-students. We have students in high schools, obviously, that are taking advanced level courses, like calculus and trigonometry, that are not in testing courses, right? So, we'll never see the data, but most students are.
Okay.
So, Kevin, on these, um, these slides, it's in terms of the, the percentage of students who met or exceeded expectations. What are the expectations? Like, I'm assuming that doesn't mean that forty-five percent of the kids in geometry failed. Like, what is, what is the, the expectation that they're?
What's the minimum?
If we are gonna get, there, obviously, the state takes a test score. And we're looking at the level four score, based on all the results from the state. But we'll get. Here we go. So, if you look at this, the way that these students scored is, is five level. Level one is did not meet expectations. Level three was partially met expectations. Level three is approaching expectations. Level four is met expectations and five is exceeded expectations. So, you can see here, kind of like the graph is partial about a little bit in terms of each level. Grade three working with your algebra two. Looking here really at that green point, as I started, which means that we're saying proficient level.
The number in the bar is the number of students who were in that group?
The number in the bar is the number, the percentage of students that fell within that group.
Oh.
So, you're, so the goal would be, if I, if we understand this, to more, green and blue, the better, okay? Right, and more blue, the better, really, that that blue becomes more larger and the green decreases.
Correct, and it's kind of, if you're interpreting the graph, it's the sooner the green starts.
The better, okay.
So, a little, um, hello, if there's.
So, the grade eight geom- and grade six, too, right, is kind of pushing it. So, there do seem to be a few areas, which you're aware of.
Moderately consistent, and from grade to grade, we can see when we get to the advanced grades, uh, the consistency.
Okay, 'cause these are so much to do by that, it's getting, you know, bad.
Now, while we would never typically separate students by race or ethnicity, mainly because we're tiresome, for subgroup data. So, that is here for you. It's kind of a reference in terms of different subgroups. Our largest subgroup is our white students, sixty-nine percent of the population, followed by Asian students at fourteen percent. Hispanic students at nine percent. Who are more racist at five percent. Black and African American at three percent, and American Indian at about one percent. One percent of Asian students. Moving on to the language arts. Same graph with Mawa compared to the state. We'll see in grades three, four, and five, AIP level. Quite frankly, it's something we didn't expect. I remember grade eleven, there was that twenty-five students who were trying to use this assessment, and they were playing a relationship requirement. Um, if they did not meet their specific expectations. You see the number can get to the highest, the AP number, to those who have done this.
So, thirty-six percent of the twenty-five.
So, you see. Yeah. Same graph for English and Arts, in terms of consistency, grade to grade. You see, we, we're sending them briefly. That's kind of, I guess, analogy, to explain how the fingers on the Arts, and how that progression in language arts is worse than the staircases, right? Where every interval is the same. You're stepping up that staircase, kind of at the same level each year. And after this little climbing mountain, sometimes those initial steps are a little bit easier. As you scale, scale that mountain, there's some unique things that happen, and it's a little more unpredictable. So, there's complexity at the highest level of mountain, is very difficult to do.
But the story of math really ends up well, that we, because the Algebra II is, Algebra II is pretty hard, it's hard for me.
It does. And you can see from the number of students now, our advanced math students, when you look at that, a hundred and eight students that were participating in, um, eighth grade in algebra, those students typically end up. So, it does end up very well, obviously, in both areas of language arts. After that, after the mountains, it's very.
Kristen Turner.
Subgroup data again. Go down the race in ethnicity.
And can it be assumed that anybody who took an ASV test also took English language test, or did? For the most part.
This is a pretty close relation. Have exception once in a while, but very small, less than one percent. That's the thing. We're also required to, if we're not, there's two specific values, so we apply the identification programs, and the results on the test. Certainly, this is for the count. And the left reading was on the Arts, and the right for Mathematics. And you see the results there. Now, students do have these programs for a reason, because, um, they're worth it for the students who stood up. The function where they're developed, and they are actively, that's part of the reason why they have these special programs. And often the challenges, the room difficulties that they have, make, you see. And what I did was, this is remembered, if you're looking at scale of one, two, three, four, and five. This is students that were at level five. We also, it's, it's important, I think, we have a lot of students that are, a lot of students in education, very closely related to art. It's just like. Includes that level three, like, students approaching expectations. I think when you look at those numbers, like, those are a little more powerful, when you look at those numbers, you're saying, look at the, look at the bar special. Again, those higher level math courses, the course is difficult. I think that's typical of these, one, the difficulty of the assessment. Two, it's also indicative of our obligation, and really our desire for surest, to use the potential, and also to use the potential. Part of that is exposing students to other content. I think also, it, it shows our understanding as a district of philosophy. We're not too worried about that, because we have this.
Is it fair to say that the cohort in grade seven, its comparability to the cohort in grade five? I mean, because EIPs are individualized education programs, right?
It, it, of course, it particularly with students by ID's, it's very, very difficult to compare. Also, it numbers students.
Ah.
So, they range by, the lowest number, I think, is twenty-two students in grade that have ID's.
Hmm.
And we have, well, forty, including, like, the.
So, small cohort, it's also.
So, we're going with twenty-two is the smallest grade, and grade four is thirty-nine.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, it seems like, again, if you look, just like, at three and four, we're doing pretty well, and then it trickles off, but it's not really fair to compare each bucket, yeah.
Right, it, it's impossible to compare three by three.
Right.
Not only with these students, but really with any students in grade three, or in the elementary grades, and grades that have the chance, regardless of the special education. Or general education.
But on the English language side, it's more consistent, grade to grade.
There's a level.
Yeah. The people write those math tests.
I'll have to talk to them. We have students in district that really have some gift challenges. And if they can be part of the universal study, they're, they're, since they're a vested student, so you can play a little, we don't have four in those results. Let's see graduation rate for the last, uh, four years. Uh, so last year, our graduation rate was ninety-five percent. And the graduation rate calculated by, so we're looking at those students who did not graduate. With less, with a little more than a handful of students, um, who did not graduate in class two thousand and nineteen. Half of those students, um, are still continuing in Mawa High School. Some students did more than four years of graduate, and the other half of students. SATs, you know, remember SATs? The score is out of sixteen hundred. SAT has two sections, math and reading. The recent scores compared to the New Jersey State reading. Five score of math, math and verbal, for last year's class, it was, it was eighty-five, which was one hundred and twenty-six points higher than the national reading, and ninety-five, twenty-five points higher than the state. Our average over the last three years is a level limit, and that's eleven, twelve hundred. ACT. ACT is the other testing college ones, uh, all brings up either an SAT or an ACT. Recent years, we've seen a trend, with students taking the ACT more and more. SAT, the difference between SAT and ACT, SAT has two sections, and ACT has four. Math, English, reading, and science. The highest possible score is thirty-six, and we average the four scores in each section, and get a positive, twenty-four point seven, which is higher than the state. Now, when students take, either we, we pair students with a five scores, they do the SAT, or the SAT scores, or the AP. So, when a student takes both, we put them on the chart. This, as, this ACT score is twenty-four point seven, which is equivalent to a twelve, thirty SAT math score. So, our average, we go back to slide, was eleven eighty-five on the SAT. So, that twenty-four point seven, this will put them to a twelve, thirty. So, more students are taking it, it's more, it's a little more, it's a little weird, weird, a little bit more towards operational. We get a lot of strong math, science students, and those students are a little bit better on the math and science section, and that average makes it positive. AP. Like Kevin was talking about the different tests, over the last couple of years, NJSLA, that's not from the park, NJSLA, they've changed the test, uh, they've made a different test. There are certain tests, SAT, ACT, AP, that are a little more consistent, have more of a tracker. AP is a financial placement test, a college-level class, that students who, who enroll in a, uh, AP class in Mawa High School, there are four of them. Uh, they're required to take, they're required to take. Not every school requires students to sit for the exam, but they're enrolled in the class. Mawa High School is one of the few schools in the area that requires every student. AP, who sits for an AP class, must take the test. A lot of students who, who take it on, it's the, the challenge of, of taking it, taking the class. So, the, the test is graded on a score, a scale that's going. It's rated a score of three, four, or five, in the college credit. So, ninety-one percent of the students, if they take the test. Four, three, four. We have some students who come out of Mawa High School, six, nine, twelve, fifteen credits, that transferred to college, and they're already once, they've already got one semester. So, it's, we're talking thousands, thousands of dollars. And these are scores by subject. So, if you look at, we could focus a lot on the English and the math, so if you look at our, now, those AP, three point six, nine, three, four, five, around college credit, I'd say four point seven, and a perfect score of five. Chinese, four, no, Chinese, eight. The twenty-four L, which is like three point one. And we're running, and we're not just running one, we're actually running multiple sections, we're recording, you know, two of the section, and fifty, fifty seven. Sixty percent of our seniors, those boys, those seniors, believe Mawa High School picked at least one college that it fits. The percentage, the percentage of our students attending college, we need to send them four-year, uh, two-year college, sixteen point six. This is something that is, you see a trend, out of one, on, for county, and state nationally, just because they're rising off of college. More students are attending for two years, but that's not right, the rising, um, consistent. I wish a couple of students who are in, uh, upper-tier, uh, professional students, who took advantage of Burton County College, they took stars for it. They go for two years, perhaps a year. So, they're utilizing those two years, and they're transferring to another university. As Kevin talked about, we're, we're seeing the test scores over the course of the year, we've seen how students, um, did it form, and now they're top of the mountain. These are the schools that the kids have gotten into from last, from last, last year. They're like, uh, Syracuse, Parisian, five, the Burton County College, and, and nineteen, Yale. Nova, U, Park, couple in the Andes again last year. Miami, Indiana. Um, Cornell, Notre Dame, Michigan, Iowa State, Penn State. That's the AP top ten football. And this, this is the stat that I really, really stand out. And we have Mawa High School students who are attending college. But we look at students, literally, really wicked, students. Student, referencing students who are scoring very highly. And who are not only academically prepared, but also socially, and from an adventure standpoint, willing to step out of their comfort zone of the tri-state area. There are students attending college, looking for different things, which speaks volumes, that are going beyond test scores, where they're, they're creating students, they're creating human beings that are functioning members of society, and who are actually religious, or, 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 they have the confidence, they can nurture, they support, they have a great foundation in which to go out and do whatever they want to accomplish in the world. And I would thank you, and, um, thank you, our colleagues.
Guys did a great job. And the greatest gift we can probably give you is to say, you know, I'll go home, enjoy your evening. Thank you for being here and supporting your colleagues. Thank you.
Ms. Windrickowitz.
This will be posted on our.
Yes, it will be. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, have a good night. Sorry, you don't wanna stay for any part of our.
This is gonna be written in the notes.
Rain and wind.
She's got Ramses.
John.
Wait, rain and wind predicted for tomorrow.
I won't remember.
If any hazardous up. Caution and trick-or-treat.
So, that's for some.
No.
Okay, Mr. Bleecker.
Oh, yeah, no, we won't.
Why don't you turn the lights on?
It's not gonna be. Lights.
At least have it.
Thank you. Mr. Fair, you have a report for us this evening?
The metaphor, yes, the metaphor is, is realized. Um, so, a short report, um, first, at each of your, uh, places, you have ten invitations, uh, for our first. places, you have ten invitations for our first strategic planning meeting to share with the people that you know. And we are working on a video to introduce what that decision-making process looks like, based on a variety of stakeholders' perspectives. So we're working on that next week, and.
I think that, no, I just think that'll be held, if there are any questions out there, from people saying, you know, what is strategic planning, of course, so what's my role? If you invite me into the building, what is it that I'm going to do? And this video that we're gonna put together, which will be included in a link with the letter, will allow people to hear from some parents and some teachers, um, plus, what it looks like and exactly what they're all going to do.
And we also had our.
Can I ask a question or not?
Oh, sure, of course.
So Lauren, I had asked you, the people that aren't receiving the postcards, how will they be informed? And you said through email, but that will just go to the parents. How are we letting other members of the community know?
We're doing personal invitations to them as well. I believe we sent out a number of my.
Yeah, we sent out, we sent out about a hundred to different stakeholders throughout the community.
And what about people that, when you say stakeholders, those are people?
So the Chamber of Commerce, town council members.
So what about just the everyday, common person who might want to attend?
I mean, electronically, we're going to be posting this image, you know, on our website, or our Twitter feed.
Anything in the newspaper about it?
Certainly every chance of the page, it's easy enough to send a message, why not? I've got to mention, certainly.
I just think the more diverse the group is, the more of an asset it will be to us. Okay, thank you.
Are there other things that maybe the town has in their communication toolbox?
Well, that's the newsletter's going out, but I don't think it is in time for this. Outside of that.
Well, the, the other thing is the M C N. Maybe we can get this on, as a slide on M C N?
Maybe.
Okay.
Yeah, but so unhelpful.
Okay.
Perhaps our, perhaps our council liaison could read it in his report. We'll ask Mr. Mater read it during his report that is televised.
Yes. Is he here?
I don't see him.
No, he's not here tonight.
He'll be before that.
Yeah, so it should, it should go far. Sure, not talking downhill, but, you know, I understand that everyone has, you know, wants to, to share their thoughts. And the last piece is, we, we had our first paraprofessional recruiting event. We had approximately thirty-five attendees, and eleven of those people are being appointed or recommended for appointment on this evening's agenda. So we were also able to replenish our paraprofessional substitute list, which was really important for our buildings. So we look forward to doing something similarly in the spring.
Very cool.
That's it.
Great, thank you very much. My report for this evening. The Bergen County Middle School Honors Course, I'm happy to announce that the following students were accepted into the Bergen County Middle School Honors Course, and will be representing Ramapo Ridge Middle School and the Mawa School District. Ricardo Petroni, eighth grade, who had the best score among the sixty-plus baritones who auditioned. Jonah Vowles, seventh grade, Carrie Prunk, who scored among the eighty-plus altos who auditioned, and Colin Mossman. And the concert will be held on Sunday, November seventeenth, at three P M. at Bergen Field High School. And then also have a little information about the Bergen County High School Chorus auditions. So we're happy to report about a successful evening at Bergen County High School Chorus auditions. Twelve Mawa High School students were accepted to the chorus. So congratulations go out to seniors Olivia Letto, Aaron Lockwood, Dante Mejia, Matthew Slotbauer, who have made county chorus for all four years of high school. And only about fifteen choral students in the county are recognized each year for four-year memberships. It's quite an accomplishment. Also accepted last night were seniors Lydia Charan, Sophia Garbin, Aiden Mossman, Rebecca Solomon, junior Anthony Grisefo, and sophomores Paige Leoya, Adya Mahanti, and Hala Agazalik. So congratulations to all of those students for their accomplishments. Do we have any board committee reports for this evening? Yes, Mr. Gallo?
Just very briefly, prior to this meeting, the finance committee met with Dr. Shona and with Kyle to review the bids on the interior alterations in building five, and we'll be making a recommendation to the board at our, for resolution at our next meeting. We'll follow up some details in the email.
Thank you. I have a quick question for you. How's the light going? Does anybody have any update on the light?
I asked John, he said, other than a couple of parent issues, it seems we were.
Is he working very well? Okay.
It's exciting to turn left at the light.
Yes, to see the light, yeah.
I don't come over here much. I was like, oh, you have the light.
Yeah.
It was great.
Will we receive something before your?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Probably two or three days. Sorry.
Any other board committee reports? Is that it for this evening? Okay, thank you. Do you have any remarks or additional comments and any reports or other non-agenda items? Yes.
I congratulate the school's foundation on the successful casino night gala last Thursday. Thanks to all who attended. Special thanks to the chairs of that event, and Annalee, and Kate Kuzmareski. I know very well. So, but it was a great night. It was sold out, three hundred people. Room was packed, and it was really good for the, just for the community staff and for, raise money to those kids.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, may I have a motion to move on old business? Ms. Conoco, second by Mr. Gallo. Does anyone have comments on old business? We're good to go. Okay, could you please take roll call? Thank you.
Ms. Secone?
Uh, yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzmareski?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
abstain.
Mr. Wenderkowitz?
abstain.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes.
And now, if I may, like, a motion, abstain. Oh, I'm sorry, I have to abstain. Thank you, Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Might as well join the crowd.
What am I gonna do from now on?
Don't email me, though.
Thank you. May I have a motion to proceed on new business A through K? Mr. Copeland, second by Dr. Morthe. Have any comments on any of these items? Board members, good to go. All right, could you please take roll call, Mr. Weaker?
Ms. Secone?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, except on seventeen A, I'm standing in check number zero nine seven, zero nine four.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzmareski?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes.
And we'd like to take eighteen new business A through U. May I have a motion to proceed on that? Mr. Wenderkowitz, second by Ms. Secone. Any comments on any of those agenda items? Yes, Mr. Copeland?
I'd like to thank the volunteers again for taking their time out for the schools.
Most definitely, thank you.
And, and this includes all the new paras, Dennis? All the paras are in this, um?
Great. Could you please take roll call?
Ms. Secone?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzmareski?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes. The public questions are comments. This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public? Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. De Silva.
Questions or comments? Thank you very much. We have a motion to close the public. Thank you. Mr. Kuzmareski, second by Ms. Conoco. And may I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting? Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Copeland. And the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you everyone for attending.